We are ready to begin when you are.
Good morning, everyone. Meeting to order. Before we get begin. And we enter week five of the COVI pandemic. I'd like to acknowledge our community efforts to slow down the spread of the COV-IV-19 in Elgin County and thank everyone for their strict adherence to physical distancing. Recent spike in positive cases in Ontario. Important now more than ever to practice physical distance. The provincial government has announced stricter definitions of essential businesses and upstate to physical distancing and guidelines and enforcement options. Elgin County remains responsive to new information. It's coming from other levels of government. We are not only seeing changes in the way we deliver government services, but we're seeing changes in how we as a community can interact with each other. As county council becomes more reliant on technology, we are seeing a shift in how technology is being used for families in lieu of face-to-face gatherings. We are also seeing a significant shift in how local services are being delivered. We are seeing a growing number of restaurants offering takeout meals, more business offering their products through online platforms. We need to support our local merchants as much as we possibly can right now. As warden and in the interest of keeping our community safe and reducing the spread of COVI-D-19, I cannot emphasize enough, staying home is the safest thing you can do for yourself and your families. This will save lives. Please follow the directives and the guidelines set out by the province and the southwestern public health. Elgin County has taken a number of measures to help slow the spread of the virus. We have accomplished a lot in a short time. The community has come together in a big way and are starting to see signs of progress. We're still going a long, a long way to go, but council together with our local municipal partners and neighboring municipalities are on the right track to get this together. In closing, I do want to thank council and staff for keeping businesses going in your community as well as the county in these very difficult times. I especially want to thank Julie and Michelle Harris for their vigilant and monitoring of our homes to keep our residents safe. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next order of business is disclosure of beginner interests and general nature thereof. Just a reminder that we do need a recorded vote on everything. Minutes from April 24th, was there any errors or omissions? Hearing none, can I have a mover and second over the minute?
By Purcell.
By Purcell, seconder.
Jones.
Second by Jones, all in favor on a recorded vote.
Deputy Warden McPhail. Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Jiguer. Or Ketchabah.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden. Nine zero carried.
Thank you. We need a motion to move into the committee, the whole. Mover and seconder, please.
Mark, so move.
By Mark, seconder.
Ketchabah.
Ketchabah, second. All those in favor, recorded vote.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
For Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Can you hear? One more time, Counselor Jiguer. Yeah, I had no. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero carried.
Thank you. Next report is the warden's report, there is an error. It states that Elmer declared a state emergency on the 19th, actually it was the 18th. Other than that, is there any questions on the warden's activity report? Seeing none, we need a motion to receive and file. Mover and seconder, please.
I'll move it.
Moved by French, seconder.
Martin.
All in favor on a recorded vote.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Some audio issues. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes. Okay, next report is rural initiatives. Ed, do you want to head that one?
Be happy to, Mr. Warden, and thank you. The report is before council. We're looking for their approval moving forward with modified recommendations. This report was to bring forward a recommended summary of the grant allocations for 2020. In light of the COVID-19 issue, staff have recommended that we fund three and give consideration or reconsideration to the remaining grant applications in a future meeting. The three being requested are the Tilsenberg and District Multi-Service Center, the Quad County Support Services, and Second Stage Housing. All three of these organizations are currently active in the community and desperately need some funding. Recommendation, of course, going forwards that you fund these at the, well, the recommendations are before you, obviously. And if there are any questions, I will do my best to answer them, but in the meantime, I will move the recommendations as listed.
Thank you, Ed, and certainly the reason behind this is that, other than the ones that are recommended, we don't know whether those events are even going to be carrying on. So, once the things are a little clearer, we can revisit, possibly, hopefully, we'll fund the ballots. But in the meantime, there is these three organizations that certainly are health-related and would like the funding immediately. So, questions for Ed or staff? Seeing done, there is a recommendation, and Ed is moving it, the second, please.
Sally Martin.
Sorry, Dominique Jiguer, Counselor Jiguer has a question. But we are experiencing some audio trouble with Dominique. Are you able to send it by text through the WebEx app?
Dominique, there's, you'll see a little bubble that looks like a dialogue box. If you click on that, you can then send, send what you want to say via text.
Okay. We received confirmation from Counselor Jiguer to carry on, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a mover, moved by Ketchabah, seconder, please. Martin, seconded. All those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchabah. And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero carried.
Thank you. Moving to staff reports. Steve, are you on the line somewhere?
Yes, I am, Mr. Warden.
Okay, Steve, your report, please.
Thank you very much to you, Mr. Warden, and members of council and to staff. Very short report, a final approval was given on a plan of subdivision in the village of Belmont back in March. The plan comprises 32 lots. Draft approval was given by county council last March the 12th, 2019. The lands are located in the village of Belmont and they are going to be developed on full municipal services. And the county has received clearance letters from the municipality and from Canada Post. So, in accordance with bylaw 13-28, a bylaw that delegates certain authorities to the manager of planning, approval of this plan of subdivision was given. The plans were signed on March the 5th and lodged in the registry office for the county of Middlesex. And the municipality and the developer have been notified, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve on his report?
Tom Marks, be happy to move it.
Moved by Mark, seconder.
Purcell.
Purcell, all those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchabah.
I'd give a thumbs up too, but I'll say yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Warden.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move into the purchasing coordinator. Mike, you're doing this one?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. So, I'll try to be as brief as I can. So, at the March 10th council meeting, council requested further information on the proposed electronic bidding process, specifically the option to allow for continued acceptance of paper submissions. So, Caroline, you can go next slide there. And the next one. So, I wanted to start by showing some data that I analyzed with the assistance of my staff at E Solutions, the operator of bids and tenders. This data was based on my experience and based on discussions with a number of bidders that the county currently utilizes. So, this first bar chart shows the bidder workload comparison during the bid submission process. So, this process was identified as one of the most time-consuming parts of the process for bidders. And what this does is showing is that a manual or paper process currently takes up to six hours to complete. These steps include calculations, checks, air checking, and the physical process of actually submitting a bid, which includes dropping that off at the county building. So, many bidders have their own staff that drive the bids to our offices to ensure proper delivery. Some use courier services, which may save them some time, but this also comes with some risk. Comparing this to an electronic e-bidding process, this task can save bidders up to four hours. The next slide is the county's workload comparison, and what this is analyzing is during the bid closing and evaluation phase of the bid process, which is the most time-consuming process. So, what this is showing is that the electronic bidding, just because of what, what's happening is that there's no data input or very little data input, there's very little calculation checking that's done for us, and there's very little error checking as well, because the system is ensuring that bids are submitted properly and compliant. So, comparing this to the electronic-only process, we would be looking at a time savings of currently from four hours down to under 30 minutes. Again, those time savings are generally from the data input, calculation, and error checking. So, what we've determined is, sorry, Caroline, next slide. We've determined that the hybrid approach is the most time-consuming process, adding incremental work over the old paper-only process. So, this method is not recommended by staff or bidding system provider. If the e-bidding is not accepted by council, our subsequent recommendation is continue with the old paper-based process. Just a couple of other points I wanted to make. The first one being is that our bidders have been using bids and tenders for over five years now. Currently, approximately 99% of our bidders download the bid documents from our bids and tenders site. What e-bidding is going to do is allow those same bidders that are already accessing our documents electronically to also submit their bid electronically, thereby improving efficiencies for both the bidder and the county. Our goal is to make staff more efficient, which allows us to maintain affordable tax rates. Another point, we recommend accessibility. We will ensure that bidders are well aware of our accessibility requirements and will do what is necessary to assist bidders. This may include directing them to our libraries for technology. Electronic bidding will actually improve accessibility for some bidders because it won't require larger print documents or require the need to physically drop off a copy to our building. Next slide. So, the recommendations here before you, and at this time, I would be pleased to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Question for Mike on the bidding process?
Mr. Warden, Ed Ketchbaugh here. Question for Mike is, are there any subscription, are there any subscription costs to the applicants for this process? I mean, is there a fee for doing this?
There is. Each, each bidder has a, there's a yearly subscription fee, it's around $165 for bids and tenders. But what that is, is it allows you to access any municipality that's using that, that system. So, you can bid on, if there's 200 agencies, you know, across Ontario that are using bids and tenders, you're, you're able to bid on every one of those municipalities' bids.
Any other questions?
Dominate said of text.
Okay. Can you see that, Mike?
I did it. Something with AOD, but it went off my screen.
Are there any AODA requirements?
So, the, the bids and tenders system, the, the standard requirements apply, so whatever the Ontario government requires us to put in our bid documents, we, we put that in our bid documents. We also have clauses in our bid documents regarding AODA. So, we would fully comply and the system fully complies with that.
And as Mike mentioned earlier, I think the big thing is, is under the old process where people were using paper. Paper is not terribly accessible. One, there's the, the transportation issue. Two, we don't, we don't, you'd have to be asking specifically to get enlarged text, whereas if you're receiving things electronically, you can adjust text size, you can have the computer read it for you. So, if anything, this is actually greatly improving the accessibility of our bidding process.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Warden, no further question. What is the anticipated? Any contractors and/or suppliers, is it anticipated they're going to be left behind and participate in the system?
Mike?
I, I don't see any, to be honest with you. Again, we've been doing, we've been posting our bids online for, for about five years. So, those bidders are used to getting our documents online. We're not giving out paper copies. We haven't done that for, for a number of years. So, I, I can't anticipate any being left behind. We'll, we'll assist where required.
And the other thing I'd like to stress as well is we're recommending that we're doing this as a one-year pilot. If we discover during the course of this that there were issues, we would bring it back to council before the year was over. If everything goes well, then we would wait till the year expires and then come, bring, bring it back for it to be endorsed fully. There's no risk really in proceeding with this. It's a great way to trial it and verify that, that they will not be causing issues for the suppliers, which we strongly believe it won't.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions? Hearing none, there's a recommendation to, before you for a one-year trial period. Move in second over the recommendation.
Jones, this.
Moved by Jones, seconder. Second by McPhail. All of them in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchabah.
Albstain.
And Warden Minell.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one abstain. Carried.
Okay, next one is economic development. Al, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Warden. Good morning. As council's aware, the 2020 tourism season in Elgin County will be impacted by COVID-19. To what extent, this is currently unknown. This will result in some cancellations of various spring, summer promotional campaigns. As a result, staff is recommending the waiving of all tourism membership program fees for 2020. The amount of revenue expected was approximately $42,650. Of course, this will be offset by the expenditures that not be occurred, which is $31,000 for these programs. And we'll also be saving some money as we are not hiring summer shoots this year and also not developing any product, tourism product, which is another $50,000 in savings. So, we have two recommendations from council this morning that the April 6th report titled Tourism Membership Program Fees submitted by the General Manager of Vechon Development.
Road and Sunset Road. County was successful in securing funding through the Ontario Municipal Committee in Cycling Program in 2018 and paved shoulders, added on two additional roads qualified under the program. Four additional cycling facility projects, two pavement marking projects and two paved shoulder projects are proposed to be implemented as part of the capital plan and supported by the Cycling Master Plan. Formal review of the Cycling Master Plan is proposed in collaboration with Elgin's member municipality partners to be completed once the Ontario Traffic Manual Book 18 is updated currently underway. The recommendations before you is that the report be received and filed, that staff be authorized and directed to implement cycling facilities or revisions to the Cycling Master Plan as detailed in this report, and that staff be directed to undertake a comprehensive revision of the Cycling Master Plan after anticipated revisions to Ontario Traffic Manual Book 18 are made. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian.
Counselor Martin wishes.
Moving on, we've been talking over, I'm sorry?
Counselor Martin wishes to see.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Counselor Martin wishes. What I was, I noticed you have Sparta on there, and my concern is that Sparta Line, which is going to be reconstructed in the next year or so, should also be included in the future, just because it would make sense to lead into Sparta and then down to Dexter Line. So, I'm just asking if that is to be included.
Ryan?
Yeah, we could certainly consider that once the review of the Cycling Master Plan is completed. I'll make note of that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brian on this report?
Yes, Mr. Warden, Ed Ketchbaugh here.
Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. BAM staff tell me that in Phase 1 in 2014, I guess, and identified Plank Line or Plank Road Heritage Line and Chute Line as part of the Phase 1. And the question is, when Plank Road was recently resurfaced, why were the shoulders not paved and incorporated into the master plan?
Mr. Warden, existing road profile there did not support paved shoulders there, given the very tight geometry, as I'm being told. Having seen it myself firsthand, I, I can understand that concern. It is noted that nearby trails exist as identified on the plan, and at this time cyclists are encouraged to utilize that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brian?
A question for Brian?
Go ahead, Tom.
Most of those, I assume the cycling is. Is there anything, any consideration for transportation, like we had one of our roads heading to London?
Through you, Mr. Warden, there are the 2014 Cycling Master Plans in it, identify several connecting routes. Those just haven't been structured out to date. And in due course, as part of the capital plan, will be done so.
Wondering with Wonderland being reconstructed?
Wonderland Road is being reconstructed with a wider platform to potentially accommodate paved shoulder in future. Based on our preliminary discussions with various officials as it relates to the Book 18 update as it speaks right now, we don't anticipate Wonderland Road identified as a cycling route. And again, we'll review it once the Book 18 update is completed. But at this time, part of ongoing reconstruction works, we are ensuring that the platform is wide enough in the event council chooses to make that a connecting link.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions for Brian on the Cycling Master Plan? Seeing none, there's a recommendation, mover and second over the recommendation, please.
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, seconder.
McPhail.
Second by McPhail, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Okay, Brian, you've got the roadside environment as well?
Through you to county council.
Mr. Warden, could I? Yes, people who turn their mics off, we're getting a lot of reverb, but I think if people turn their mics off, we can hear better.
Okay. There's a request that if you're not speaking, to turn your mics off, there is some static on that, so please, so. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. Vegetation control within the county's road allowance environment is an important maintenance activity and component. The current road maintenance agreements with our member municipalities, which includes a responsibility to remove vegetation to the road property limits once every three years in order to manage growth from becoming larger and difficult to remove, based on feedback from our local municipality road supervisors citing difficulty in achieving the intended assaults due to roadside topography, for specialized equipment, and difficulty securing contractors to complete the cutting. Flexibility exists for member municipalities to perform mechanical cutting or to allow naturalization of the road allowance. So long as eradication of invasive, noxious weeds, either mechanically or by adhering to the county's approved herbicide spraying policy is met. Regardless of the methods selected, larger growth trees, as an example, are required to be removed before it becomes difficult to do so. The recommendation is that the report be received and filed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Question, Brian, on this report?
Yes, Mr. Warden, Ketchabah here.
Go ahead, Ed.
Through you to staff. My understanding is that the. Through you to staff. My understanding is that the current road use agreement does not reference canopy. The question for us is, does referencing canopy then in the new scope, does that expand the scope of the work for lower tiers without compensation?
Through you, Mr. Warden. This additional, the requirement currently to cut the road allowance once every three years is done in above and beyond the current allowance provided to member municipalities. Removal trees is, from staff's perspective, included in the road maintenance agreement and included in the funding provided. With terms of larger canopies that may exist, there's certainly opportunity to have those discussions. But from the perspective of existing, maintaining existing trees, that is, that is included in the scope of work. $1,41,090 inclusive of a contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that DND Trucking and Construction Services Incorporated be selected for the granular A shouldering project at a price of $144,050 exclusive of HST, and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to sign the contracts. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on this one? Seeing none, move her in second over the report, please.
Ketchabah moves.
Move by Ketchabah, seconder.
Martin.
Second by Martin. All of us in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
On March 10, 2020, staff have awarded tender 2020-TO9 being the Wonderland Road Reconstruction to LA Two Construction Limited, following confirmation that the total anticipated project cost is within the approved budget application, and have entered into a fully executed contract. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on Wonderland Road?
Mr. Warden, Counselor Jones?
Go ahead, Ed. Go ahead, Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Brian, it's great to see that this is finally happening. Have you had any further discussions with MTO regarding the bottom end yet? Is that moving anywhere further along the line?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. We finally just received last week the MTO's RFP evaluation scores and have combined those scores with ours. So we anticipate that a report will be tabled before County Council at its next meeting, awarding that assignment.
Any other questions for Brian? Seeing no more questions, move her in second over the report, please.
Moves.
Move by Jones. Seconder.
All seconded, French.
Second by French. All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero motion carried.
Thank you. Brian, the Warren Street, you're doing it as well?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden, the County Council. This is the second and last component of the King George Lift Bridge Rehabilitation Project, whereby it involves intersection improvements at Colburn and Warren and at Carlo and Warren Street. In addition to customer crossover improvements at three locations on each of those road sections, a tender was recently released. The details are before you. The recommendation is that 598424Ontario Limited operating as R Russell Construction be selected for the Warren Street Intersection Improvements Project at a total price of $505,745.19. That's inclusive of a $90,000 contingency allowance and exclusive of HST. I'm happy to report that when combined with the previously awarded project associated with the bridge rehabilitation itself to Landform Construction Incorporated, that the forecasted project deficit has been decreased. Granted, it is still in excess of the current budget and will be budgeted accordingly in the 2020, 2021 capital budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on the Warren Street?
Marks, I'd be happy to move the report. To see a good bid.
Thanks, Tom. Seconder for the report?
Jagair, all seconded.
Second by Jagair. All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
You mean Martin?
Yes, Counselor Martin first.
Yes. It's all right. You confuse them at times. Yes, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Marks?
Yes, again.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero motion carried.
Okay, Jim, you're doing the changes to the fees and charges?
Yes, I am, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
With the COVID crisis, it's going to put a strain on the finances of many of our residents. Numerous meetings and discussions with the local treasurers on how to resolve this. Ultimately, the collection of taxes is a local, is done locally, and the decisions would have to be done by each of the municipal councils. However, the strain that that puts then on the local municipality, the county can play a role and help mitigate that pressure. The province has already implemented an easing on the collection, or the collection of the education levy to the province. The March submission is still due at the regular time. However, the June submission has been delayed until September, and the September submission has been delayed until December. So that provides the local municipalities with some room. At the current time, at the county level, at the last emergency meeting that we had two weeks ago, we provided 30 days relief so that the March 31 payments were not due until the end of April. The proposal that we have before you is that we would then, that County Council would provide a further extension, saying that any payments that have not been collected from the ratepayers would not need to be forwarded until the end of 90 days. So that's providing then relief so that, that their payments to us match the inflows coming into the local municipalities. One of the things that we've done is we've participated in Municipal Finance Officers Association, or MFWA, conferences, and the MFWA had discussions around trying to promote those people that can afford to pay to get them to pay. So again, it'll be a local decision, but one of the things that the local municipalities can be considering is putting in some sort of disincentive for late payment. As it would be perhaps a very low interest rate so that those people that can afford it would pay on a timely basis, whereas those that can't are being overburdened by, by higher interest rates. So those will be decisions that you'll be seeing coming forward to your local council. But for today, what we're trying to do is provide the municipalities room so that they don't, that they kind of help, we can assist them in their cash flow as they navigate this process. The recommendation before you is that the bylaw be amended as shown to effectively provide an incremental 90 days of payment time on any payments that municipalities are receiving coming in late. Recommendation is before you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Questions for Jim on his report? Hearing none, move her in second over the report.
Move by Purcell.
Second by Martin. All of us in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden? Zero motion carried.
Okay, next one is the cleared exemption. Steve, are you there?
I am.
Go ahead.
Through you to council, the report before you relates to clearing exemption. Hearing conducted March 10.
Speak up a little bit, Steve. It's hard to hear you.
Right?
Thank you. That's better.
At that hearing, the clearing exemption permit was granted with reforestation in relation to the trees being removed. Within two days thereafter, received information that the trees along the laneway, which was the subject of some discussion at the hearing, were set to be removed rather than trimmed, which was the representation made by the engineering consultant during the hearing. As a result, the permit was put on hold. Before we could report it to council, there were further discussions between the developer, the consultant, and the objecting landowners. The dispute in relation to those trees was resolved. So the matter is, the report is before you for information purposes only. No, no action is recommended.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve? Seeing none, just a motion receive and file. Move her in second, please.
Ketchabah.
Move by Ketchabah, second by?
Jagair, all seconded.
Jagair, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah? Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero motion is carried.
Thank you. Steve, you're doing the land division procedure?
I am.
Go ahead.
To council, the report before you proposes consideration of a bylaw amendment to the Land Division Committee Procedure Bylaw 1835 to allow for electronic participation in the initial response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the declarations of emergency. The meeting process for LDC was suspended. No meeting was held in March. No meeting is scheduled for April. As it's proposed that a bylaw amendment be made to allow for electronic participation in respect of these meetings, but only during a period of time of a declared state of emergency. Procedure that is proposed in the amending bylaws, the same procedure that was, that council passed in respect of its own meetings. So the recommendation is for the report to be filed and that council consider enactment of the amendment to allow for the electronic participation.
Thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve in this report? Hearing none, move her in second. Sorry?
Happy to move the report.
McPhail, all of us in favor?
Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero motion is carried.
Steve, you're doing the next one on meeting procedure for committees?
I am. This is the, I suppose, the concurrent proposed bylaw amendment for the committee bylaw 19-40. It proposes electronic participation, the same as was proposed for the LDC.
Everybody else getting feedback?
Yes.
Okay, this is really, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Go ahead, Steve.
This is.
It still echoes.
Looking over to IT.
That's better.
The report before you is the, is a similar report to the last report, relating this time, though, to electronic participation in the committee process. Again, for the same reasons, the committee meeting schedule has been suspended. It's now proposed that it be reinstated with electronic participation. The procedure that is being proposed is the same procedure enacted by council in respect of its own meetings. The recommendation is that the report be filed, that council consider enactment of the bylaw amendment allowing for electronic participation in committees.
Thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve in his report? Hearing none, move her in second, receive and file.
Jones moves.
Move by Jones, seconder.
Jagair, all seconded.
Second by Jagair. All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Steve, the Terrace Lodge Pool?
Yes. Actually, if I could make just some general comments that relate to the next three reports, the next three reports deal with frustration of contracts to which the county is a party. Legal frustration in contracts essentially relates to, or is a principle that allows for relief from contractual obligations when performance of obligation by the parties is rendered impossible by circumstances beyond their control. And with respect to the next three, well, with respect to the contracts, which are the subject matter of the next three reports, the pandemic declarations and orders, including orders relating to maximum number of people involved, closure of recreation centers, as well as the advisories regarding social distancing has rendered it impossible on the, for both parties to each of those contracts to perform their obligations, and it's proposed that relief be granted on the basis of frustration. With respect to the Terrace Lodge Pool Use Agreement specifically, council contracted with YWCA to allow use of the Terrace Lodge Pool for aquatic programs. The winter session has been completed and was completed before the declaration of emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. The spring and fall sessions cannot now be fulfilled. It's therefore proposed that frustration be acknowledged in an agreement. There were further discussions with YWCA repres- There were further discussions with YWCA representatives. There was consideration of either suspension for a period of time, and then the term of the contract is extended by an equal period of time following expiry of the contractual term. That option was not available due to possible interference with the destruction in twenty twenty at Terrace, twenty twenty-one at Terrace Lodge. As a result, it was determined that the appropriate relief was termination of the agreement with proportional reimbursement of prepaid fees. The recommendation is therefore that the, that the report be filed, that the acknowledgement and termination agreement that's attached to the report is approved, and that the Warden and Chief Administration Officer, Insentive Officer be authorized to execute the agreement. I can indicate that YWCA has, YWCA has in fact approved.
Thank you, Steve. Julie, we need to address each of these individually?
Correct.
Okay. Questions for Steve on the Terrace Lodge pool? Seeing none, mover and second, receiving file? I didn't catch that.
That was Council.
McPhail, second.
Second by McPhail, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. You need to go into the Meals on Wheels or, Steve, or we just, you kind of ran over all three of them at the same time.
The only, the only difference with respect to the Meals on Wheels is it's proposed that the two agreements be suspended with the, with an additional extension of the term of the contract, equal to the period of suspension to be effective following the termination of the declared state of emergency. So it's not being terminated, they will simply be suspended and then added on at the, at the end. That applies to both contracts. VON has actually signed agreement electronically, and West Elgin, the local indication is that it would be acceptable, but I haven't received any formal indication of.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Question for Steve on the VON, Meals on Wheels? Seeing none, mover and second of the, the recommendation?
By Purcell.
By Purcell, second. By Ketchabah, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks? One more time, Counselor Marks? And again, unubited.
Hold that, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And the West Elgin Meals on Wheels, any comments, Steve?
Say is, Lee, on a suspension?
Any more comment?
Sorry, it's the Meals on Wheels for West Elgin. It's again, for the same reason, proposed to be suspended and extended at the end of the term for an equal period of time. The, I've received a local indication that the is acceptable, just not supervisory approach.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Questions for Steve? Seeing none, mover and second for the report? Move by Marks?
Jagair, all second.
Second by Jagair, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine zero.
Thank you. Julie, you're doing the next one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of County Council. Elgin County continues to support our community's response to COVID nineteen and the work of southwestern public health, and in particular at this crucial point in time and stage of the pandemic. And as part of our efforts to slow the spread of COVID nineteen and in keeping with the province of Ontario's declaration of a state of emergency, the county has moved to minimal operations and we are delivering essential services only, and that is until further notice. We continue to monitor our operations daily to ensure that we're taking actions to protect residents, businesses, and employees. The report before you includes our response to COVID nineteen so far, along with community actions and our unified response efforts. We continue to closely monitor the financial impacts of COVID nineteen and anticipate being able to report on that in the near future. As we continue our proactive response to ensure the health and safety of our residents and staff, we will continue to provide counsel in the community with regular updates. The recommendations are before you, and that is that the report be both received and filed, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for Julie on her report? Hearing none, mover and second, who receive and file?
All move French.
Move by French, second.
Martin.
Second by Martin, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. There's one item for, or correspondence from the Federation of Agriculture supporting Ernie Hartman's bill. I would strongly suggest that County Council endorse this. I think our farmers need as much protection from harassment as possible, and certainly this would go a long way. Questions on the letter from Federation of Agriculture?
Martin?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I thought we already sent a letter endorsing this. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it was Central Elgin that did, but that's my only concern. I'm happy to endorse it, but I thought we had already done it.
Julie?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We received correspondence at a previous meeting but did not, did not send a letter. That was not the action item.
Any other questions on the, on the letter from the Federation?
I would move that we send it.
Okay. Move by Martin, second. Second by Jones, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. There is three items for correspondence. Anyone wish to make comment? Seeing none, mover and second, who receive and file the correspondence, one, two, three? Mover and second, please? Move by Purcell? Second. McPhail, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Under other business states and inquiries by members? Notice of motion? Matters of urgency? Seeing none, we will go into, into closed session. There will be a brief recess when they get things set up, but I need a mover and second that we move into closed session to discuss the Municipal Act Section two thirty-nine dash two, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards, Port Bruce Bridge, and also Municipal Act Section two thirty-nine dash two, personnel matter, or to identify individual, including municipal or local board employees, labor relations and employee negotiation, DOD nineteen corporate staffing plan. Mover and second, please.
All move it French.
Move by French, second. Second by Marks, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. We'll have a quick break, and you'll let me know when you're ready, Joy?
Yes, we will. Thank you, Mr.
Now, can you hear me?
Fairly.
Very well.
Okay, I'll speak up. Is that a bit better? Thank you. Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French? Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion is carried.
Julie, do you need any time before we move into open session again?
I can use this computer.
Open?
Carolyn, are we back on live stream?
Ready to go?
Need to go.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt recommendations from committee of the whole, mover and second?
Nope. Before that, Mr. Warden, we need to, we need resolutions for in camera item number one and two.
Okay. Recommendation with Julie, mover and second?
Move by Purcell.
Purcell.
Second.
Second by Mark.
This is in camera item number one, Port Bruce Bridge. Resolved that the staff proceed as directed. Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Item number two?
Resolved that the confidential report from the Chief Administrative Officer and Director of Human Resources be received.
Second, please?
McPhail?
Move by McPhail? Second.
Jagair, all second.
Second by Jagair? All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Next, we have motion to adopt the recommendation from committee of the whole. Mover and second, please?
Martin.
Second by Mark. Move by Marks, all in favor?
Was that moved by Marks, seconded by Martin?
I think it was Martin and then Marks.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden? Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Bylaws?
Thank you. Beat a first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty dash zero seven, being a bylaw to adopt a policy for the procurement of goods and services for the corporation of the County of Elgin and to repeal bylaw number thirteen dash nineteen.
Mover and second, please?
Jagair, all moving.
Jagair? Second by Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Abstained.
And, Warden?
Yeah.
In favor, one abstained. Motion carried.
Julie, next one?
Beat a first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty dash eighteen, being a bylaw to amend the fees and charges bylaw number twenty dash zero nine, to defer the imposition of interest and penalties on levy payment.
Mover and second, please?
Ketchabah?
I'm sorry, the second?
Purcell. Purcell.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yeah.
Nine zero, motion is carried.
Julie?
No, there's two more.
Carry on.
Beat a first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty dash nineteen, being a bylaw to amend. Bylaw number eighteen dash thirty-five as a bylaw to prescribe prescribed medications.
Seconded by Ketch, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Julie, next one?
Be to first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty dash twenty, procedures for committees, being a bylaw to amend bylaw nineteen dash forty, being a bylaw to define the mandate and meeting procedures for committees established by the corporation of the County of Elgin.
Thank you, Julie. Mover and secondor, please. Who moved it?
Jaguerre.
Jaguerre, secondor.
Martin.
Seconded by Martin, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Moving, mover and secondor, please. Who moved it?
Jaguerre.
Jaguerre, secondor.
Martin.
Seconded by Martin, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?